Okay, we'd like to call to order the town and Niskiuna Planning Board and Zoning Commission, August 11th, 2025 meeting. Ms. Bergamme, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Millsbaugh?
Here.
Ms. Strain?
Here.
Mr. Khan?
Here.
Ms. Belofsky?
Here.
Mr. Billenkauhn?
Here.
Ms. Gold?
Present.
Chairman Darpino?
Here.
Next up is the approval of the July 28th, 2025 meeting minutes. Make it a motion.
No, moved.
Moved by Ms. Gold?
Second.
Second by Mr. Khan. Any corrections or discussion items? I had none. Okay, all in favor of the July 28th, 2025 meeting minutes date by saying aye?
Aye.
And one abstained? So the minutes are approved. Moving on, public hearings are up next. We have no public hearings, so we'll go directly to Privilege of the Floor. Privilege of the Floor is open to any resident in Niskiuna wishing to speak on any planning or zoning matter. Please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record. Okay, it looks like we don't have anyone present for Privilege of the Floor. Laura, do we have any applicants online?
No online and no emails.
Okay. All right, seeing as there's no one else left for Privilege of the Floor, we'll close that and move on to unfinished business, which there is none. And no new business. Moving right along, we'll get it right into our discussion items. First up is One Research Circle GE Vernova Site Plan Application for New Signage.
Hello. Tom Wheeler with AJ Sign Company.
Tom, could I ask you one quick question? Are you going to be representing the applicant on this?
Yeah.
Or is Matt going to be the point person?
But I'll be representing him and he's gonna, he'll be at the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna have to recuse then.
Certainly.
Ms. Belofsky will take the lead on this project. Thank you.
Got it.
Can you, I think it would be helpful if you could just explain, since this is new for us, just kind of walk us through what's happening, what's changing, what's desired in this application?
Yep, we can start. That sign, oh. That's the, that's the first sign. So as you come in off the, off the main road, right now there's no sign there. You just look back and you see the, the security building. So there's a, an out and an in with a median in the middle. We're gonna put this sign parallel to the road right in that median. As you see there. This is very similar to what we had over at Balltown Road. Where the letters are halo illuminated. So they're gonna light up the sides again, like the indirect lighting method. This is really the only sign you can actually see from the road. The rest of this is all way back in, again, over a thousand feet off the road, similar to Balltown Road. We can keep going in and get to the next one. So this is on the building. The building isn't a flat front. It kind of jogs and there's an inset there. Where that inset is, we're gonna put GE Vernova letters on the wall. Again, halo illuminated, so aluminum face, aluminum returns, stood off an inch and a half, and you get that soft glow around the letters. So this, this sign, you can't see from anywhere except for straight on, because again, it's in, in an inset in the building.
And Tom, it looks green, but is that just? Is, is?
It's just a box behind it, so you can kind of see where it's gonna be.
Okay, so that's not the actual color, right?
No.
Yeah.
They're not green.
Just making sure.
Yep, there'll be a.
It's just the black that we're seeing.
It's a brushed aluminum painted letter, so it's a silver look during the day. We also have this sign, this is a building name sign. This will be non-illuminated, just like Balltown. We don't know what the name of the building is gonna be yet. So we're using this as a, just a space holder, cut aluminum letters on the building. And then the last sign, this is kind of an interesting sign. So this sign was designed by GE to represent a turbine blade, you know, a windmill blade. It's on two sides of the sidewalk. So you have the left where it says the energy to change the world. You have the sidewalk and then you have the rest of the blade off to the right. Basically, the sign's made out of aluminum and then those letters are halo lit, just like all the other letters we had. So they're gonna be stood off the aluminum at night. You get a nice soft glow. There was a night rendering that I sent over to Clark. I don't know if it's in here. So it's kind of an architectural element more than a sign. It's gonna be pretty cool. And that's right up against that building. Again, you can only see it if you get past the guard shack and you're, and they're in there, which is not easy to do. And that's a, that's a summary of the package.
So I know in looking through this, there's a requirement for a zoning variance, given the size. Any questions, I guess, from the board first? Just for my clarification, because I've actually never been on that campus, there are also aerospace signs on that campus? Or is this just pertaining to a section?
I've only been to this building. I've never been allowed to go to the right. So next, next meeting when Matt's here, we can ask him what's back there, but
Okay.
this place is secure.
Got it. Understood. So it's contained? It's not competing?
No, it's very, you go, you go in and you see the big parking lot on the left. That's where you park to go to that building. All the signage is really on that building right there, except for the one out by the main road.
Okay. So I guess, thinking about how this has been handled in the past, we've asked to see a comparison of what compliance signs would look like, just to show, I mean, what they would look like in terms of the space on the building?
Yep, we could do that.
So I think that would be helpful for us to make the comparison.
And just to clarify, it would be 50 square feet. Really, any additional square footage, it needs a variance in this area because we, because it's a total for the whole property and it's already been used up. But generally speaking, it's 50 square feet on each building, so that'd be the one we'd wanna see.
Just hope we can see side by side to, to show.
Yeah, so we'll show that. Square.
Yeah, probably we're basically just talking about this big guy.
Yep, we can do that.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful for the next meeting. And then Laura, remind me what the process would be from there?
So Clark and I were working, well, Clark was working on all of the square footage. I think we're ready to do a denial. So, and Tom, if you can go fast, we'd work to get you on the September meeting.
That'd be great.
By Friday, we'd need the appeal. And then we have two meetings from the planning board where we can do a recommendation to the zoning board. So August 25th and September 11th. Whichever one you choose. Yeah.
So he would come back with the comparisons at the August 25th meeting and we'd be able to do?
You could do a recommendation to the ZBA at that meeting after you look at the comparisons, or you could go until September 11th, depending on how much you wanna think about it.
I think seeing it next time is sufficient, agreed? Yeah, I think we can do that.
Okay, so we'll prepare the recommendation and then you will submit the compliance sign so that we can look at them.
Yep, I'll have that in. And then Matt can be here next meeting, so if you guys have additional questions that I don't know the answer to, he'll be here.
Okay, terrific. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Belofsky. Next up is 2331 Troy's Connected Road Site Plan Application for New Signage, and this is the Heritage. Be turning this over to Mr. Khan as I have to recuse on this one as well.
Good afternoon, welcome.
Thank you.
And thank you for the submission of the photographs. So I think the, you know, the entire project in the public, that a board in the public has the narrative for this, but the key issue really here is site plan approval, you've been granted the sign size and type waiver from the ZBA. But an issue is raised in the public comments about the brightness and also maybe some light spilling over. So I'll, you know, turn over to you, right? I guess the board will comment in a minute, but from the photographs, it does seem like it's quite bright down the building. And I could see how a neighbor on Anandaga, on the rear of the building, on the north side of the building, could actually see that there's light spillage. So I think you had agreed to a set of potential conditions that'll mitigate this. We'll comment on those in a minute, but I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, sure. So my name is Tyler Turpin. I live at 371 Bly Road. So after talking to the electrician, and I sent you guys everything that, what they can do. So right now, I guess it's on like the manufacturer standard setting. So it can go down to 20 watts, which I don't know how much, honestly, I don't know how much dimmer that's gonna make it, but it will go to lowest setting. 3,000 kelvins, which is even warmer than that. And at night, it's actually, I, I don't like the bright blue LED, so I opted when I purchased these for warm, to go with the brick. So I think it'd be even warmer than that. And then he can set the timer so that every light, the front coach light, the bottom coach light that's on the building that were there. So every light except for the two little ones above the front door will shut off at 10 o'clock, because the entire building's wired to that one timer. And I really don't wanna spend the expense again to try and pull all that apart, so it's easier for me just to set it off at 10, 10 PM. But that's really to the extent of the, of the lighting that's on the front, and it's really for the safety. And the bottom side, like I said, I don't have any employees probably that'll work till 10, maybe 8 is the latest in the winter. But it's more the 4 o'clock to 8 o'clock timeframe. But, you know, that's that.
Yeah, so I, so I think those are reasonable. The only question I really have for the board, and you know, there's no precedence first, in fact, we've gone the other way on this at times, is I don't think we need to see new pictures, but I'll leave that up to the board to decide if they wanna see pictures at the new settings. But the next step on this would be a resolution for the site plan with these conditions as listed. And I'd be comfortable calling for that, and if there's something egregious after those conditions have been tried to be fulfilled. Right, I think we can always come back to that.
Are you able to turn the lights down now so that the board could drive by and see?
No, that's my, well, I can't. Now, it's the electrician. They gotta take the light apart and like adjust inside the lighting package, the lumens of it. But I don't, I don't know how to do that.
Is he able to do that within the next two weeks? Or she?
I can call him to do it, sure. Yeah. I would have hadn't done it two weeks ago if he needed it. I mean, it's, it's not a big deal. I can, I'm doing it anyway, so.
What is it currently set to? Did he say?
I think it's 4,000.
No, the wattage?
Uh, the wattage is 25.
Okay, so it's?
So in those specs I sent from the manufacturer, there's re-wattage, yeah. So I think it's the middle one, which is the standard.
Thank you.
Yep.
I've got a question. When you make it a warmer light, is it gonna distort colors? I have a big thing about that.
You know?
Because if something adverse happens, it's always helpful if people can give accurate descriptions.
Sure.
And some of those warmer settings really distort color.
Yeah. I'm not an electrical light engineer. I don't really know, but to me, that at night, it's not, it's bright, but it's not unwarmed, if I can say it that way. It's not like that blue LED color, so I don't know about light distortion. I mean, until we try, I guess I can't give you that answer.
Well, if you could look into whether or not it'll distort colors.
Sure.
If something happens to one of your employees leaving, it's really good if
Yeah.
people can accurately describe, person was wearing this or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, I drove by at night and it did seem brighter than I recalled it being in the past to go by there pretty frequently. And I think part of it might be because a lot of vegetation was taken down, all the street trees on Route 7 were taken down, several trees along Anandaga and, and the backside of the building, which might make it, some of that light getting off the property, actually might be more. One question I had for the rest of the board is, you said the, the coach lights or the luminaires next to the doors were, were existing, but you replaced them when, when you took over building. The town code requires cutoff luminaires where they don't go out horizontal like these do. I mean, the pictures do show a bit of a glare and they are kind of bright when you go by, so I don't know if there was a preference to making those cutoff luminaires where they're not coming out horizontal and still provide the, the safety that you're, you're looking for. And then last, the flagpole, that new?
That's new.
Yeah, so that has a light also on top?
Yeah, it's supposed to illuminate the American flag. Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess in terms of.
From the top.
Yeah, so in terms of like completeness for the lighting plan, I know at the last meeting, there was a request for a plan that showed all the lighting. I guess that's a light, you know, that's, that's part of the lighting on the overall property. And if that has any impact too, in terms of color and size and height.
Would that be a solar light by any chance?
Solar light. Yep. Yep. I had the option to run electrical, you know, a large light on the flagpole. So I just bought the smaller solar disc on the top, just to, just to illuminate the flag shining. I, I.
Make it nice and proper, yes.
Yeah, it's very important to me.
And those solar lights work amazingly well.
I agree. I thank you. And those coach lights, by the way, I mean, they're residential grade. I can maybe get less bright candelabra bulbs that you'd have at your house to make them, I guess, less bright, but like I'm more concerned that 5 o'clock that my staff is gonna leave that door and it's not gonna be bright enough for them to walk out the back staircase.
And that's another reason why I'm concerned about whether the colors are, you mean, accurate?
Sure.
Or get distorted.
Sure.
Because if everything winds up looking sort of yellow, it's hard to tell where to put your foot.
I agree. I agree.
Did you ever give a consideration to just lighting the stairwell, the staircase going up?
I mean, I guess, I don't know how to to do that.
Some form of inset lighting on the staircase itself.
It's all open. Every stair's open.
Okay.
So I mean, I guess I have to have somebody run it along that retaining wall that's there and literally maybe come down every stair.
Could you not do a solar option?
Solar light option on the stairs?
Just, I mean, just brainstorming, just would eliminate all of the wiring.
I guess. I haven't looked at wooden stair solar lights and how it would actually catch the sun to shine out from that angle. Because that's that, I don't know if you've ever been to the property, but that's like tucked in the corner, like hidden.
So at this point, you've not made the adjustment with the electrician?
I thought so. He's one of my clients. I talked to him all the time. I said, this is what we're going to need to do. I wanna make sure before we do it, there wasn't anything you guys needed before we do that. But he gave me those specs from the manufacturer and told me it may have to be done.
And then how does that differ than, you, you said that the additional stuff would be to downgrade the bulb to more of a residential level?
So I, I bought at Lowe's candelabra light bulbs for those black, like that little coach light there, because that replaced what was there. The other ones were just rusted copper. So I kind of, just to keep the aesthetic of the building, I just replaced the same. And those are just three residential, I think it just looks bright there, but maybe if I buy a lower bulb, they're not dimmable.
Yeah.
So maybe just get a not as bright bulb.
I have to say myself as well, driving by, the front is not an issue. I do feel like it's that side entrance. And I certainly understand if that's a usable entrance for your employees at night, that you need it, there needs to be sufficient lighting.
Yeah.
But I also can understand the concern from the neighbor.
Sure.
So I don't know, yeah, maybe that, turning down the wattage, but then also investigating whether you can do like a, and that's like a less powerful light bulb.
Yeah, for those light.
For those, yeah.
That's fine. And I think too, because it's been vacant for now two and a half years, there hasn't been anything. I literally just kept the lights above on and the heat on while we went through all the process, so maybe it's more of a shock than, you know, good. But I really tried my best to make it look as good as I possibly could without doing heavy construction or anything. So yeah, I can do that for a guess. And then you want me to take some different pictures and see if it changes?
Yeah, so, so I'll propose something and, you know, and one expectation we would have had would have been, this would have been sort of the lighting plan, like we said. I think I could be okay with the photographs, but let me propose something here. First of all, I think we have agreement on 10 o'clock, everything turns off. Right? So in terms of the wattage coming down to, is 20 watts the lowest setting or?
20 watts the lowest.
Okay. And the warmth going down to the 3,000 Kelvin.
Correct.
And also, it's not resistant, but you know, if you can actually on the door carriage lights, go to actually a, a lower wattage bulb.
Sure.
We could draft a resolution for next meeting with those conditions stipulated, and if you can get your electrician to actually make those changes ASAP.
Yep.
Prior to the date for the next package, right, which will be a week before.
Uh, not, not necessarily for the, I mean, we would probably just need them changed by the next meeting, right, so two weeks from now? Because it would give the board a chance to drive by.
Right, yeah, but if, but if you wanted to get pictures submitted and give the board a charge, then we should stick, yeah. So if you can stick to that, that'd be great. And then the board drives by and we take a look at it, and if we're okay with it, we'll act on that resolution. If not, we'll table that resolution and have more of a discussion.
Sounds good.
Is that reasonable to the board?
I have a concern about the 3,000, because the last light study, we saw we wound up staying with the 4,000 because the 3,000 made everything very amber. And I know that was a more public-facing building than this is, but still.
Yeah, that was the, um, it was the ATM.
The bank ATM, yeah.
So if you went down.
For safety's sake and reliability, if something goes wrong.
Could you just go down in wattage and switch to the residential and maintain?
We could. I mean,
I don't know what it's gonna look like.
I know that's.
You know?
Yeah.
I mean, the, the ones in the building, these, that's no, that's super easy to do. I mean, it's small, that's no big deal. I just don't know out of the, the two below, it should make it, I would think, maybe a difference. I don't know, but the front ones, maybe, I don't know what's better, warmer or not as bright?
Yeah, not as bright from our perspective.
But still accurate in color.
So maybe, maybe we go to 20 watts with, and leave it at the 4,000 to see? And it's still in the, in between.
You said, right, you maintained it at 4,000 last time?
We did that with the ATM.
With the 4,000. They offered to go down to 3,000, made everything, that's it.
Was a bank.
Made everything very amber.
Yep.
I'm trying to zoom in on this a little bit, but, um, 3,000 is still considered neutral, like, I think for the bank, we were, you know, but where the color distortion really happens, I think, is down in the 2,000. This is 3,000 right here. This is 4,000. This is 6,000.
I mean, the distortion at the bank was more of a primary, was more of a key issue. Right, because it wasn't ATM, it was.
People were coming.
People were coming, yeah.
Right, this is passive.
Yeah, but if you're going out and the weather's right, that little difference in color can be the difference between being able to accurately judge your distance and not. I'm extremely color sensitive that way.
So what do you think is the best?
I can leave it with the 4,000.
And go to 20?
Just.
20.
Make it so it's not spreading out so much and all.
And I gotta tell you too, I mean, going down lower on the light bulbs, I mean, that's not like the source of the light. It's there on the building. But it's really that landscape lighting, as it bounces off the brick, it kind of illuminates the whole pathway to the staircase. So by reducing the, the lighting strength of the ones in the building, I don't think it's gonna make a big deal at all. The bank will just look better for you guys.
Yeah, I think on the Anandaga side, because the Route 7 side, you're only like illuminating to the eve.
Yeah.
And on the Anandaga side, you're illuminating the whole side of the building. If there's a way to dial it back, so it's only going up like the top of those windows.
Sure.
The bottom floor, that might make it
I agree.
less obtrusive.
And maybe too, we could angle the, um, the lights to go more forward facing, right, instead of as high? Which should maybe capture like the bottom of my office, which is on the right, and that left office there. If we could maybe just have it stop by the white and under, that might be better, just by tilting them with those adjustments, we should be.
I mean, at the end of the day, you really wanna be illuminating the pathway to the stairs.
Yeah.
Right, to some extent, stairs.
Yeah.
So, so I think based on the discussion we had about the, the warmth, we could stay with the 4,000K. Right, not have that as, as a condition in the resolution, but if you can make the other changes.
Sure, be happy to.
Including angling the lights, right? Look, at the end of the day, it's whatever you're getting from this discussion, from the photographs you took, that'll mitigate that bleed of light to the neighbors on Anandaga. Maintain the safety of any pedestrians leaving your building and coming up the stairs.
Sure.
Right? But definitely the wattage and the, uh, the candelabras, I think, need to be at a lower, lower wattage also.
I think we'll achieve what we're looking into anyways. It's just get people out of the building safely, right, at the end of the day. That's what's important, so.
And if you could actually, I'm sorry.
And then we'll have the 10 o'clock cutoff.
Right, and if you could actually include in the next set of photos, and strong encouragement to board members to just drive by. Please let us know, let Laura know, and you can let us know in the planning department.
If you do it, then I'll send everybody an email out, and then include a picture of the flagpole too.
Yes. Thanks.
You got it. Thank you, guys.
All right, yeah, we're, we're trying to have this moved, but at the same time, the, the key thing here is that, you know, there was something articulated by the public. We understand what the source of it is. But I think we have a responsibility to try to mitigate that as best as we can.
You got it.
Right?
We happen to help. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Okay, next up is 3406 Albany Street, a site plan application requiring a special use permit for the operation of a religious education facility at a single-family home. I am the project lead for this, so Mr. Hirschberg.
Dan Hirschberg from Hirschberg and Hirschberg. We prepared the plan. And I don't.
I'm you, representing this site.
Okay.
The, uh, we made some changes to the plan. We put a table on it showing the building coverage, impervious coverage and green space on it. We also outlined the parking area that'll be used on Sunday. I also clarified that using the number of seats is not really a great thing to use with this group, because I understand that the only person who has a seat is the monk, the rest of people sit on the floor, so. But the proposal is to have up to 30 people at, at those meetings, and that's, and that's what we're preparing to do. So that, that's the number we used on our calculation.
Okay. So, a couple, a couple things. Thanks for the plan and taking a step out so we can see where upstate guns and ammo is in relationship to the property and outlining where the additional parking would be. So the first thing I wanna touch on is that you've shown 10 parking spaces on the property in addition to three that are basically off the street, correct?
Yep.
Okay. And on your table to the right, you have that calculated as, you know, a pervious surface, right? So basically, is this currently just parking on the lawn?
Well, they're, they're parking on the lawn now.
Mm-hmm.
And the goal is to put a gravel pavement in.
Okay. So what this is, I think this is leading to is that we're, we're taking a very small residential lot that right now is convenient to the, to the ownership group to use, correct? Because they have. And in order to get to make this a usable space, there's gonna be a lot of site work modifications that have to happen. And then I think we're gonna have to dive into the code a little bit here to take a look at, you know, what constitutes a parking space? Does it have to be paved? Is it gonna be some sort of, you know, porous pavement or something to meet those, those area ratios? So right now, I don't think just demarcating the lines on where the grass is is gonna be suitable long-term. There is just gonna be maintenance issues in the winter, plowing, all that type of stuff. So I, so, some basic questions I have is, you know, I think it's great that the group meets here, but is it really the right fit for what the long-term purpose is? And what we have for religious institutions in town, I believe that there's a pretty large footprint that those, those buildings have to be on. And have you, have you looked at other, like, like other places to lease or rent? I mean, that's a question for, for, for the owner, but.
This is the site that they, they currently are interested in, and again, it's a single-family house and it meets their needs regarding the space inside for the purposes that they have, so. Having a larger structure similar to a, a church or a synagogue is not really what the group has in mind. They have a much less formal structure in mind, which is a single-family. structure in mind, which is what a single family residential house is. Um, and it, I think it'd be inappropriate to pass and to find a, a more la- or larger or more prominent religious building similar to a whole bunch of religious buildings in the city.
It, it's not necessarily recommending that they do that. I'm just saying that the, the building itself may serve the purpose of seating thirty people, but the site itself has a lot of limitations to it. And I think that's, that's the hardest thing, at least for me right now, is to see if that site was developed correctly and what it would need to show adequate parking. I think you're gonna be over the, um, pervious surface, uh, that would be allowable in town. And those are pretty tight parking spaces, even though they, they come in there, you know, you've got another one down at the bottom. And if someone has parked in the first three spots off the street, you're, you know, you're blocking in. So I, I understand that they may all kind of arrive at one point, but, you know, there may be some fluidity. And then the other thing that could be considered is that if this became long-term and sustainable, what is the potential for growth? And if thirty turns into forty, turns into fifty, you know, the site restrictions are getting, you know, it, it's getting really, really tight. I know that you have the deed across the street parking with Mr. Seraphini's building, which I think is, which is, which is a good move. You're gonna definitely, obviously, you've shown a need for that. But where I'm coming in, as far as, you know, just the site work configuration itself, I think has got some challenges.
So is, is all the parking met by the guns and ammo lot without the ten spaces showing on the, on the lot?
We, we can use the lot across the street to meet all our needs with a couple of spots that back on the street, we would have enough parking. Because the basis is based upon the thirty seats, which I think we need.
Right, cuz, cuz the chairman's point, well, I don't think I would like to see impervious surface put on this small of a lot to make up parking spaces and create the parking need within existing, there's a lot of parking along Albany Street between that and the coffee shop next door. Um, and if there's a written agreement, is there a way that that can be part of the slip, the, the approval of the process that it, that is contingent on a written agreement for that parking, that off-street, that off-site parking? And if that in the future were to, you know, the lot sells, sells, and the parking agreement goes away, that the use, the approval goes away?
Y- y- yes, so my thoughts were along similar lines, right? We, we've done the concept in the past where we've banked parking spaces that we did not want to see developed with impervious surface. So right now, yeah, just to make it clear with the drawing, impervious surface are the two spots on Albany Street.
Yes.
And the ten that you've got indicated, which are actually access from Gaziner, correct?
Correct.
Right? So, but a, a car pulls in, in an entranceway off of Gaziner, past those two other houses, and someone drives across this property to get to those parking spots that are demarcated there. And, and although it says ten, we didn't count out this ten, right? We don't.
Oh, I, I counted the one on the end here.
Okay. All right, I guess maybe I missed that one. So with that, that makes ten. Um, but right now that's grass.
Yes.
Right? And you know, there's a clear statement from the board that, you know, we wouldn't like to see that, or probably wouldn't even be allowed to actually have that all become blacktop. So we're definitely talking something that it's stated as grass bank spaces or gravel spaces.
I think you might do. It's a low, four-inch concrete structure. Of course, the, and it has gravel and anything, which has holes in it where the grass grows and it's porous, we saw. The, the grass in the middle will absorb any water, so you might be able to do that and keep the, um, the, uh, level of, uh, impervious area down on the site. If that would, if that would assist in getting this approval, we could sign that and show it on the next edition.
So, so I guess just one question I had for, for the planning department. So twelve spots on the property, is that sufficient for the count? And I know we've got a difference between number of people and number of vehicles and, I'm sorry, number of people and number of families.
Um, so Clark and I haven't done the full analysis, but based on the square footage, or like he put in here, the, so thirty max people, it's one parking space per four seats, so that's, he's coming up with eight parking spaces there. I mean, it's probably reasonable based on the square footage. It's a little complicated because you also have the single family home, which would typically then also have its own parking. Um, it's, you know, it came up at the CAC, we've never really seen a proposal like this before. So some of it, we'll probably have to dive into the code and do our sort of best reasonable. We do know that it is gonna need a denial because the lot is too small, like to Mr. Dr. Pino's point, normally, uh, houses of worship are on two acres in residential zones, so so that adding that use is gonna trigger a denial, at least for the acreage. I don't know if there'll be other things that have to get denied as well.
Okay, so, so what's the sequence? That's, that means the sequence. On a user area of hands.
Well, they gotta get to at least what the final site plan arrangement's going to be first.
Done, agree.
Planning board can actually only waive, I think, thirty percent of the required parking. After that, it would also be a zoning board.
The acreage.
The acreage definitely has to get denied, yeah. But there may be other things depending on where the site plan lands that would have to be denied, like, um, Mr. Millsbough was asking, typically, the shared parking would be, at least when we've seen it, it's cross easement agreements. I mean, maybe we could go with the parking easement, uh, parking agreement. We'd kind of have to see it drafted and written, make sure that those parking spots could actually qualify and count.
So back to Andrew's question that he raised, I mean, is there a path forward where there are the three spots that, is it three that are pre-existing on the street? And there's sufficient off-site parking, or we do something much smaller in terms of adding one or two more? Because I know you talked about how the large events are only once or twice a year, right? But generally, it's.
Weekly is very small.
Uh-huh.
So just for summer weekly events.
Yes.
Round about ten individual max.
Ten fa- ten cars?
Ten, not ten, got the individualized, ten people.
So it seems like the majority of the time, the need for parking is sufficient.
And also they celebrate the only event for weekly is only Sunday.
And only Sunday, but it feels like most of the time what they have suffices. It's only this once or twice that they need a larger event, so much like at any other larger event, you contract for parking. So I, I mean, then, right? If, if it was just a question of a site plan where there's an agreement for off-site parking, and they don't need to add impervious surface, it's a much easier ask. What else are we dealing with at that point?
Yeah, I would think that that it's definitely gonna change the character of the community if you add ten parking spaces to a single family residential home, like, so. So if there's ways to avoid doing that, um, you know, that's, it's hard to reverse, like.
That's what I thought. It's our job to think about what happens when it, when the day comes that it's not you anymore, right? And the next person chooses to live in that as a single family.
You would need stormwater retention ponds on there, I mean, because it, you know, ten.
Might, might not be very bad if you use something like grass techs, which will appear when it grows through. It looks like grass, you don't even see the concrete structure at all. So it won't be fractured for other uses of the site if it comes here again. That solves the problem of the treatment of the onsite park.
Dan, what is that called again?
What's that?
What is that called again? Grass?
Grass techs, it's, uh, there are other names for it, it's a, it's a, it, um.
I've seen, I, I saw it down at the Beacon Estuary Center, but you still do see, you still see.
Send us a picture of the use, on its weight in Albany, parking is on grass techs, and it looks like grass. It does have concrete structure, so it holds up cars and it'll be, and it can be plowed. The grass settles down and it joins be, in the space between the concrete, it's a concrete grid, which has a lot of.
My concern though is long-term, right? It goes back to being a residential.
Yeah, I, I mean, you know, the town will have to weigh in on this when their grass techs is considered, what's the impervious?
Yeah, I don't know what that is, yeah. But the, but the only other thing is even if you can get a parking lot that doesn't look like a parking lot, you're actually still putting ten cars on a single family lot. You know, and it is good that it's only once a week and for a relatively short period of time, but, but you know, the next door neighbors and everything are now looking at, instead of a yard, which is what they.
Yeah.
Like, you know, ten cars parked there.
Yeah, I guess one question, like to probe a little more with the board than, and what, you know, Mr. Millsbough brought up. Would we, I think this would be a first, would we ever approve a project where we're reliant completely on parking agreement at another location?
Um.
I mean, li- like I said, I know we, I'm sorry, I know I asked a question, but I know we've done it where we've banked spots on the property in question. Right? I think we actually did that. Gosh.
Um, on Troy's connected.
On Troy's connected, right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, seventeen sixty-nine Union Street, that is underparked. It has a cross easement agreement that allows it to legally use, um, St. Cattery's parking spaces during the week, and St. Cattery can use its parking spaces.
Yep.
Again, yeah. Um, yeah, so I mean, that, that, this, that site is not contain the required amount of parking spaces on the property, but it has an easement with the adjacent property for the.
This is different, this would be a contractual agreement, right? Is the easement different than what's been drafted here?
Um.
Or is that a, Bob, Mr. has a question?
Yeah, so the easement is different because it's a recorded document at the county clerk's office, and it can't just expire. So you can't have a situation where one landowner gets pissed off and says, no more parking agreement. Like, the town would never know that. So the easement, the formality of the easement provides additional protection for the town.
Okay.
But is this different because it's not business to business and it's commercially zoned, like this is a single family home in a residential area?
Um, I don't know that it's different in that if you look at, uh, it is unique to be proposing like a house of worship in a single family home, but the use in and of itself is going to require a certain amount of parking spaces. If you provide them on the lot, it could have potentially negative ramifications to the, you know, adjacent neighbors. If you provide them off-site, then I think you, you would have to have some kind of an actual, because especially use permit is illegal, you know?
Yeah.
Jane, you would have, I mean, I would say you probably need an easement, unless Rob has a different opinion.
No, so we've also had conversations with, uh, Mr. Seraphini when, with, when he's been in here about whether that site was appropriate for his multiple uses. And, you know, so the concern is if he leaves, then the new owner may not be willing to extend the same agreement. And frankly, we don't keep track at the planning board level necessarily when ownership changes. Um, so I think that puts the town in a tough situation of like, and, and I get the idea that it's not gonna be all the time, like during week to week, it's not gonna be a lot of parking. But let's say it really takes off, then what?
Yeah, we, we, we have to plan for, a- and that's why in honesty, the the only objective things are the current and projected numbers, and we've got that at thirty. But that could easily become something greater than thirty.
Right? Four, at four per quote seat, end quote.
You've got some margin, right, right? We've got something that changes the character of that neighborhood and change the character of the zoning if we allowed for actually the making of ten parking spots. Whether it's done with grass tech for impervious or whether it's done with blacktop. Um, and then we also have this situation that Mr. has summarized about the, you know, the limitations in time concerning the, the agreement with, uh, the properties across, across Albany Street.
Right. And part of Mr. Seraphini's dual use is used car sales. So the amounts of occupied spaces do fluctuate at times depending on what his inventory is. Now, I believe it's relatively low from what he keeps, but there's some flexibility there with how many spaces he continually occupies on that site.
I've got a question and a comment. The question is, could we have a condition if we get to approval stage whereby the applicant has to notify us if that parking agreement goes away? And come up with an alternative or cease the use?
So the issue with conditions all the time is, um, enforcement. So people bolt and then they don't really care.
Well, we also have ordinances that really depend on the neighbors to call to the town's attention. I'm not sure I see a major difference there. And my comment goes to the fact that there are a number of religions where they don't normally maintain a house of worship, they meet in each other's homes and all. So there, this is closer to that, I think, than what we normally think of. And I, I think we need to see a way to accommodate.
Yeah.
If they have Albany. It's not on that. Been there for like thirty, twenty-five or thirty years so far. He continues to operate like that, and it's actually has many more than thirty people there on major holidays and even on, on both.
What's, what's their parking arrangement?
What? Street parking.
Street parking?
Parking on street, on street parking.
And that's a special use permit in Albany, or it's a?
Albany, uh, Albany, it was, it's a granted use, uh, religious organizations are permitted in the residential zones in Albany. So it's a permitted use.
Yeah.
Uh, and because it's an Orthodox Jewish congregation, very few people, they don't really drive on the holidays mostly. And I drive when they're coming for, um, classes or something else, but not on holidays. So that solves our lot of parking problem.
Yeah.
And again, I, I, there are other places in the city, I'm sure, I've worked on three or four in the city of Albany, which are private homes. Uh, they're primarily small congregations similar to what this is. And, um, their code is permitted, doesn't even specify, but that's different.
I don't think the private home is as much of the issue for our consideration as the parking.
Ag- agreed, but, but just one thing on that, the special use, if it were to be approved by town board, does attach to the property, right?
Yes, yeah. So then.
Yeah.
It would be okay if, you know, a new congregation moved in after, yeah, as, within a year. So if, if it is abandoned for a year, and these guys move out, and then they don't have anybody to sell the property to that wants to use it as a both uses, it expires.
And goes back.
It goes back to just being a single family home.
Yeah. So just as a summary, and I know you're the lead on this, but when I'm just trying to reason through this, the cleanest and most consistent way this works is to actually change the character of that neighborhood.
By having.
And by having the parking.
On the property. Right. Then you don't need any of the cross easement agreements.
Right.
And you are creating definitely.
Well, I mean, I don't even think we can get a cross easement agreement, right? I think it'll have to be something contractual. And then, so it's really the character of that neighborhood, the character of that zoning.
And, and precedent. I mean, that's the other thing to think about, frankly.
Oh, no, we, we definitely, whichever, whatever we do here, we'll definitely be setting a precedent.
Yeah.
So I can tell you where I land on this. I think at, at this point, what would be good is if you take a look at what you want to do with the site proper as far as the parking on there. And get that into a, at least a detailed description of what would be pervious, semi-impervious. So that at least we can collectively look at that from the board. If you want to send a cut sheet along with that, if you're talking about the pavers or whatever it is. Um, if you're leaning heavily towards going completely contractual with upstate guns and ammo, that, that's fine. Uh, for, for me, I think in fairness to the applicant, we've seen this project a few times. Uh, setting up a site visit would be, would be beneficial so that we could, you know, walk the area and take a look at that. I will reach out to Mr. Seraphini. I was, uh, it's one of the project leads on one of his previous projects, just to talk to him about that. And then I think at the, at the next meeting, we at least get to the next step for where we're going to, you know, get the format for at least part of the denial letter. And then I think at the at the next meeting, we at least get to the next step for where we're going to, you know, get the format for at least part of the denial letter. So that, you know, you and the applicant understand exactly what is going to have to be recommended to the next board.
Just one clarification, I had mentioned before for the ten spots. Is the entrance on Gassner or is can the entrance be, is the entrance also on Albany Street?
We can get both. When we, if we go from Albany and get out from Gassner, the we can do this. We keep doing this mostly from Albany and go out from Gassner when we like that.
Right, because Actually two spots on Albany Street. Yeah, and then they
Two spots and then they have a driveway that can get there. So I think in terms of changing the character of neighborhood, being able to access the ten spots. The ten spots themselves change the character, but being able to access it from Albany Street, I think mitigates a traffic burden to the houses on Gassner. Right?
So you think if we establish it with a single entrance from Albany Street to the parking, we would propose to do our uh grass text type of parking or another parking that's considered by New York State E C as pervious. And we would show that on a site plan and give you the details of it. Is that pretty much what we're looking for?
Yeah, I think so. And then we can assess that with the planning department and figure out what all of the items that are triggered for the denial for the denial letter, at least get that back to you and then that will outline what the next steps will be.
Right? Okay.
So so I one question. So this uh inside the fence, this tent parking, we need to do gravel parking spot or just uh engineering mapping, we just waiting so the decisions. If it is a deny, what we can do, because this is just community donation. We don't have many technically. So we cannot do anything. It's just for meditation. We trying to do this is community mental health issue. We not doing anything, so we have no financial
Ability.
Yeah. Anything's uh whatever events that we came here is we have a lot of afford. We have to do this and owner have nothing to afford anything anymore. So we have to know clearly what should we do next? Because this parking, we have to park or not, we have to do the graver or not. Technically speaking, we cannot afford anything. So we just share with our, you know, our folk are very poor people in the community. Just a factory worker trying to get this mental health support from our men for medit- meditation, meditations. So we are not rich guy. We are very poor guy, factory workers. And then so also for cause of the language. We came here, we came here just for the language support. Most of people, they don't speak English.
So 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 let me ask Laura and 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 Sarah. Is there another pathway here other than a special use permit? Is there some kind of temporary? Something or the other?
I mean, I don't think so. We tried a couple of different things with this property um incrementally, but just the regularity of the services, the regularity of the ten to fifteen people coming every Sunday. Um, I I don't know. I guess Rob and I could look to see if there's some exemption, you know, in New York State for it. I am not aware of that.
Not aware either. So we can look and see.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, something that really is attached to this specific use, this specific property. Something that's temporary, something that's well controlled that doesn't then require, because there's a mutual, not just a financial the 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 statement of financial challenge to the applicant, but it's also like I said, we just don't want to put in blacktop and some level of impervious service.
Right, um, the thing is, our code is pretty clear about you know, the bulk requirements for housing, houses of worship and religious education facilities and and very much for monks and And I very much like that, but our code is pretty clear on what's required. So unless there's kind of like a New York State exemption, I don't, I can't think of one that we would have. And the only other balancing factor is just that although it is maybe as less intense use than what our code typically thinks of or contemplates when it's thinking two acres and pretty big parking lots. I mean, it is still directly adjacent to very, these lots are tiny and the houses are very close to each other. So I mean, there are other people involved in this decision that we haven't heard from yet.
What actually means house of worship?
Yeah, I don't think it necessarily does. You just go to the regular standard like Webster's definition and
Well, I guess what I'm what I'm thinking of is like, you get the graduation season, there's there's residential houses holding way more than thirty people all the time.
But actually, it's it may be like a weekend or two. It's not going to be every I think it's the regularity that, you know, really triggers the, and you know, they have a small sign and, you know, there's people that are coming, so you know, when you think like we do fire inspections for places of worship, places of public gathering, when people are going to you know, to visit a monk or a priest or a rabbi, they're going into these structures with the expectation of safety. I mean, just like all those kind of things kind of play a role when you're having that regular type of interaction. I agree with Leslie. There definitely are. I mean, I, you know, there's some nature based religions and stuff where people are just meeting in backyards and things, but
Well, traditionally, the Amish do not have a separate house of worship. They go to different members' homes.
Yeah.
But I guess the question I have is if there's a concern, I mean, if we were, if even if we were to grant asphalt for ten spots, it sounds like the cost of that is also a concern. So when we look Right, so when that is obviously concerned to start with, and it's obvi- obviously concerned on our side as to how permissible that would be in a in a, on a lot that's that tightly packed to begin with. I mean, does it make sense to just pursue existing parking nearby?
Well, the only way it could theoretically count for the special use permit would be an easement agreement, or you could can or you could ask the zoning board for, you know, a parking waiver. I think that um you guys can only bank something like thirty or fifty percent or something like that. So three parking spaces is not going to, you have too much there to be banked, which it would have to get kicked to the zoning board, but I mean, you could, looking at all the factors, decide whether or not to make a recommendation on the existing parking too.
Right, so so when I made my previous summary statement, it was prior to the statement about the financial challenges. So if the financial challenges are as stated, then really the only precedence base option. And I'm not so seventeen Albany Med Center with the easements, that was that wasn't a special use, was it a special? It was a special, right? So that would be a one to one precedence. Then it would have to be an easement with the parking establishments across the street. And I'm not gonna, we know Mr. Seraphini very well, but I'm not gonna make a conjecture as to how easy that's gonna be.
I I would think the parking reform would be based upon the regular normal use. If once or twice a year you have a unusually sized attendance, you know, they would happen at every sort of facility in in cities.
Yes, that's true.
Agreed, but the regular, but the regular normal use would have to be within the context then of two parking spots. Right?
So yeah, so we'd be looking at the square footage at three hundred and sixty nine square feet. That's the the regular everyday Sunday use.
I do think it's worth a phone call or two to the state to see if there's something we're unaware of that applies. And I think the Secretary of State would be the first call. And so the ones who review zoning ordinances and whatnot, record them.
I mean, I think if there's exceptional options, it's probably worth investigating. Especially you sperm, it's a big deal for us. And
Change, you guys don't like to have change his time.
No, 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 it's not that at all. It's just that it's a big deal, so we have to be very to the letter of the law, letter of the code with that, right?
I don't have any issue at all with the use. It's strictly the party.
Yeah, it's just that I'm coming from, you know, what is the best way to make this work? I have it be something that is approvable by the town. I have it to be something that is you know, that's got the long term sustainability.
And doable for you.
Right, and doable for you, right? So the the factors seem to be very constraining. And I think Mr. D R P was probably parked there before the rest of us.
So we'll arrange a site visit. Do a little research and try and have some clarity for the next meeting.
Yeah, if not by the next meeting, the fol- the following meeting, we'd like to have a defined path for us to make a recommendation. To take some action so we can keep moving this thing forward.
But but let's be clear before we wrap up. We brought this up again and just we talk about regular use and then one time use. The depicted twelve parking spots on the current drawing. Which use is that associated with?
Well, actually, according to the code, if you thirty people sitting on the floor, counts as seats, we need eight rather than twelve.
Right, okay, but at thirty people is which use? Is that the exceptional use or is that the daily use?
Big use. Normal, it's ten, so this is being generous to say there might be as many as thirty people. Allows for any growth and everything else, but it's certainly not for the once or twice a year when they may have more people. How many, how many people would you have at your major events?
Major event is thirty people, uh they came and then so we always schedule according to this uh Genshop uh site plan because they are giving us free parking, technically free, there is no need to pay Monday and then Sunday and then so we choose only Sunday. So Sunday is for us to park free, so we can park thirty individual or fifteen family in this uh parking lodge.
Yeah, meanwhile, even if it's thirty, then we still would meet the code with our existing parking.
So so from one Sunday to the next, is the number ten or is it thirty?
Every Sunday is just under ten.
Ten.
Yeah, only special events. It's very special like uh uh Wizard Day. It is once a year, Sunday, our Buddhist men but they something like the Buddhist.
So for weekly use, it's for four spots. Right, an exceptional an exceptional use, which is once a year would require them.
Rare occasions. Because the guy cannot afford to pay all these things, so whatever, we can get it free, simple.
But let me see what I can work out.
Yeah, and and I guess another question is what stops them from continuing the way they are right now?
Well, so through the building permit process, it became a pretty clear thing that was happening, um which is a code violation. So um yeah, they they have to go through some kind of a process with us.
Okay.
And are we going to get pictures of that alternate? With the concrete when grass?
Yeah, I I want to take a look at that. I think I think D E C considers it, even though there's a concrete written underneath it as pervious area. And if they do, I think the cities, uh the town should probably agree with that definition of it being uh pervious area. So the only impervious area would be the couple of parking spots out front in the building itself. So I think that would keep the the pervious area, the impervious area of the site down. But let me, let me research that so I can give it in one package.
It'd be helpful, I think. It could be applicable here and elsewhere as well, yeah.
And we will figure out how many spots we really want because if it's ten on a normal Sunday for us to make twelve parking spots is overkill.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Seneca Road subdivision amendment, seven Seneca Road subdivision amendment regarding drainage. Representatives from the applicants are here and Mr. Khan is the project lead.
All right, and so I think where I'd like to start, and you know, you guys can introduce yourselves and for the record and
Mike Doussault with Engineering Ventures. Property owner.
All right, so I'm hoping that most, if not all of the board members present were able to attend at least one of the site visits. I know Laura, Leslie and I were there, I think, on Wednesday. And Clark and others were there on Thursday. Right, but
But I didn't drive by.
Okay. So I think the narrative covers it pretty well. We're awaiting T D and also the town water department to say something, right? The the key request is an extension of the culvert. Right? So I guess just impressions from folks who had the walk around.
Well, I was there, so.
Yep, good.
Uh, I was at the Thursday morning walkthrough and Doug, the T D was there along with, um, I think Brett Steenberg, his son Chase. We had Clark, myself and Mr. Laflamme. So we we took a look at basically everything, you know, acknowledged that the detention in Rain Garden is on the right hand side of the house, which has been moved. We looked at the configuration of the driveway, which was, you know, straightened out and and brought across. The the big thing and a couple of people, I believe, uh Clark and Mr. Laflamme and Doug went through the, they went through the pathway and they walked from the park back towards. And we looked at the, we'll call it the left hand side of the culver. So it was talking about the maintenance and the cleanup. The the big takeaway from that, I think that everybody could see from where we were standing is that Mr. Lucy's driveway is what would be considered probably the lowest point on that property. So it's below the grade of the road. And depending on where that swale would end up, whether it's over the pipe or the whole front lawn becomes a swale, or the swale is justified between the pipe and the road, there's definitely grading that can take everything towards that wetlands, which was always the original intent. And I think at least from looking at the grades on site, they, so what's installed now, just for everyone's clarity, is approximately forty feet of the pipe. And then he had a stake in the lawn, right, right, yep, right there. And then it showed um what that grading would look like just over the pipe. Plus or minus a couple inches, okay? Um driveway is not in, it's just gravel driveway, but you could see looking down towards the wetland area where that would be, where that would be draining. So the takeaway that I had from that was that, you know, some sort of swale is ultimately going to be on that front lawn. Regardless of how wide or how deep or the location.
Yeah, and and so let's do one thing. We had talked when we visited that there is a swell. Right, it's it's, I I still can't detect it on this drawing. Right, it's not labeled. Or is it?
Yeah, that's the swirl. From the outlet of the pipe towards the wetland, so the
So that will be, even with the culvert extended, if that were to happen, we would still be, that swale would still be present.
No, this is, this is the, this is the current plan, so the, like, I think we're not looking at the right plan.
The 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 new plan had a, a small swale would be between culver pipe and the road, closest to the culver pipe that's buried.
No, damn. All right, sorry about that. So you want me to start over then?
For the record, they'll be here.
Yeah, so we have the inlet of the pipe and the outlet of the pipe here. And graded above it will even grade coming down to the road. So we have the property line, which is the right of way and the edge of pavement here. So we have a short shallow swell that brings any roadside drainage or any drainage coming across from the front yard and then directs that to the wetland.
But that would be then in the right of way.
Yes, the right of way is this section right here. So that would be in the right of way. And the firewood shed to that right of way. It would, you know, if water is draining towards the wetland here.
Right, but but there, but with the culvert extended, there is no swale other than the one that you're depicting there in the right of way.
Correct.
And you were saying your impression was that a swale would just naturally form.
Yeah, unless They're, that's gonna have a Yeah, unless, they're, that's going to have a natural swale to it between the edge of the road, which, where the cul-de-sac begins and the road straightens out on Seneca. That has a winged asphalt edge, which would catch runoff from the roadway coming this way, kind of towards it. And then you would have to have quite an event for that road to technically flood in order to get onto his property. So I think it's just the water that would be basically concentrated on the property proper would be what would be contained in that swale. If if that area of the discharge from the park blocked off the left-hand side of the culvert, it would flood that front lawn and it would go directly over the driveway. So the indicator of a blocked culvert pipe would be immediately flooding on the property, not flooding on the cul-de-sac road. It would take quite an event for that to get up over the road. I don't know exactly how many feet we were talking about.
It would probably need to be between 15, 18 inches deep of water flowing over that to get to to get get out of this, exit the swale and then that roadway.
I mean, the key, the key thing that I was kicking off of what Mr. Drapino was saying, and we'll give the folks a chance to talk, has to do with ultimately my original key point, right? Detection of any blockage in the culvert and mitigation. Right, and I think you're addressing that it would be fairly detectable, even without having to go see any of the edges, the inlet or the outlet edges of the culvert. And the TD was with you guys, right?
Yeah.
Is there a drainage adjustment on that path?
The path is wholly, I believe, on the town's property because that the smaller parcel in the corner was gifted to the town.
Like the, so the the prior swale that was part of the approved plan and the proposed extension of the pipe is on the private property, right?
Correct.
Right, so is there, is there a drainage adjustment on that or who's responsible for maintaining it?
That's, that's on the middle of the property. The right-of-way is about 30 feet in front of that. Yeah, the culvert and the swale on the previous plan were wholly on Ryan's, Mr. Lucy's property, so he was, he was he would maybe have to maintain that.
But there was no, there was no drainage.
No, no drainage, no drainage, and I think the, I think the what I've heard is that if there is a problem, he should with his driveway being the lowest spot, he would probably know there's a problem, that he would remedy that to not have a flooded driveway. Especially during the winter and many times in a month or a year.
And as part of the prior approval on the SWIP, is there a deed restriction on maintaining the buyer retention area and the prior culvert, or how was the long-term O and M of that?
I I maintain the buyer retention area.
No, I know, I know you do as the owner, but is there, like, if you sell the property, is there a deed restriction on there?
It's maintenance agreement.
Any other impressions from other?
Well, I was just going to update, I, the board did get a check for the TDE to start their review today, thank you, Ryan. So we'll have the TDE review by the next meeting. And I think that the engineering department is kind of landing that they're gonna be okay with what the TD kind of reviews, so. They still have a little more review to do and double check.
Okay.
But they should have a recommendation too, I think, by the next meeting.
Okay, good, and again, it's detectability, maintenance. If all of that falls on the owner, then clearly, you know, I think we can get to a conclusion pretty quickly.
And this might be a question for Mr. Hess, but should there be a drain adjustment over it since it does pass through flow from property upstream to the downstream, and I know the town does get fairly regular complaints about long-term maintenance of existing culverts and backing up and plugging and things like that.
Yeah, so, good question. The short answer is I don't recall how this original sort of was set up, but you've identified a real concern, which is when the landowner isn't taking care of their obligation under the maintenance agreement, we typically have the right to go in as a town and deal with and then charge the landowner back. I don't know if that's the case here.
Yeah, I mean, re- remembering that there is a culvert there anyways for approved plan, right, so I don't know if we had that agreement in place, I can't recall.
I don't have the old approvals in front of me, but a lot of times subdivisions with SWIPS, they do require, you know, for part of final closure of the subdivision that they, that, and is, uh it's basically like an unrecorded easement that comes to the town that says that if you don't maintain it, then we can go on there and then maintain it.
Do you recall if that's there for the previously approved culvert length?
I would have to be sure, I don't know if we did, I, I mean, I know, and it was a lot. I know that there was a lot of legal documents that were drafted that, that we didn't draft, but we can look back to see in the file.
Okay. So so we can get that clarified. Get the TD report back and.
Yeah, I, I'll clarify. I think there probably is of the rain gardens, so typically when there is a rain garden, then we are then all of the maintenance practices that are outlined in the SWIP get kind of recorded to the property as the maintenance. And yeah, so it could be modified to make sure that incorporates any changes because that is something we talked about, so I mean, there is definitely a maintenance concern and the only way that we know to address that is that, one, it starts out as private enforcement, but if for some reason the house is abandoned or there's nobody to get a hold of, then the town goes in and does it.
Oh, I'm just curious, is there any not expensive monitoring system that would be useful in this case?
I think the cheapest one would be to visual check.
I think a little bit more sophisticated than that.
Wouldn't flow rates be, they would vary at different times of the year and rain events, right? I mean, if she's like talking about like a water meter of some sort or flow meter?
They're talking about inside the pipe or?
In the culvert, correct? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, I I would.
Something so that you know the problem's developing before you've got your driveway glazed over.
Oh.
Yeah, I have, I have drainage in my house in Glenville and then I regularly check out my little catch basins, I have my pipe system to make sure it's clear, so I think that would be.
A lot of people don't.
Well, that's, that's true.
Yeah.
Probably that's.
Yeah, I mean, I know, I know from our visit.
And I look at the town pipe that goes through my property, and yeah, it looks good. I weed it regularly.
Yeah, the easiest thing to do is a visual check, especially on a 12-inch culvert, you should be able to see end and.
Yeah, just for, just for complete, that's from the visit, at least Laura, I know you and I had the discussion, let's say, I think you might have been with an airshot. I know I didn't make an assessment of the driveway being the lowest point, but we did see that there was quite a bit of room on the town side of the, the left-hand side on the drawing of the culvert. That if there were some kind of backing up, I think it would take a while for actually anything to actually make its way onto the town property and onto the road.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a benefit from a site visit, like I was standing on the bridge and, yeah, there, you know, there is quite an elevation change between the bridge and the top of the cul-de-sac. So I think it was useful to stand there and see. There's, I mean, there's definitely, I think driveway culverts, they they plug up with things, I mean, they do. There's a number of them around town, but it did look like, and the TD can verify that if it does plug up, it would still actually probably run on his private property, TD, that you know, that's kind of what we want to check and make sure that it will stay and not, not somehow flow down the road and overtop, you know? The other culverts, like, it's all gonna go to the wetland and not cause any more problems.
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess as far as the timeline, the resolution would be the next meeting and then another meeting behind that or approval potentially?
So I think what we could do is we could go a couple paths, we could wait for the full TDE review and then call for a resolution at the next meeting. Or we could put together a tentative resolution now based on what you're calling revision three with the TDE and town engineering review, and then that could be taken action at the next meeting.
I actually don't have a problem with the latter option.
Yeah, as long as we can put it together. We say tentative, if for some reason the TD doesn't get to Clark tonight in time, I am going to be missing the next meeting, nothing.
Yeah, I'm, so actually, I'm.
We putting it together pretty quickly, so if it misses that deadline, we probably wouldn't put the tentative resolution together, but if we do have the TD letter and we can get that clarity from engineering, then we could put the resolution on.
I'm, I'm also going to be missing the next meeting, but maybe I'll ask someone to just cover me on it, but a- again, detectability, maintainability, that's really the key thing. Now, whatever agreements need to be in place and whatever logic, you know, is there relative to being able to observe, so I'm okay with having that resolution.
And I would be happy to step in.
I'd appreciate that.
To fill in for the project leaders, and I would also echo what Mr. Khan says, we'll put together the tentative resolution, we'll, we'll work with Doug to try to get that information and review with engineering and I think that the site visit was really helpful to, to see what was proposed. You know, actually walking everything, it was good that some members walked from the park straight through. If you walk down Seneca, you can also see where you know, the sediment is collecting, not on your property, but going down towards that easement. And I think we can get to a, get to a finality here pretty quick.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Don't leave with that.
Yeah. We'll hear the conversation all the way out.
Okay, last discussion item is the zoning code amendment to allow child daycare centers in an independent building on a special principal use in the R1 low-density residential zoning district. Ms. Gomes is the project lead, she is not here tonight, so I'm going to have Ms. Robertson give a quick update of the additional information that was included in our packet and a quick breakdown of the draft.
Yeah, so this is our first take at actually writing code. Anytime you actually write the code, it sometimes gets a little more nuanced, so I tried to color code it a little so you guys could kind of see what's going on and I, when you go through, you can kind of see when the code has been amended and not, and so I did some research on the amendments that have happened over time. Because the first thing I noticed when I was really writing this is that the, the words that are written for the allowable uses in in this, in the main section of uses for the codes don't match up with the schedules. So and I think that's partly because like in 1989, the town allowed did an amendment to allow daycares anywhere, and then in, in 1998, they then flip-flopped and they took it out of some places and not other places. And that's also true of a couple of the other uses, but it seems to be the most true of the, these things, so care homes, daycare center, a child daycare center, adult nursery school, nursing home, playgrounds in there, but it really doesn't come up very much, and then school of private instruction, and sometimes they're almost interchangeable, but not really because they have separate definitions, so those those ones kind of flip-flop throughout the code. What we talked about is trying to make them all equal. So like for RR, the rural residential zoning district, adult daycare in an independent building and within a school or place of worship is allowed. So the highlighted in red would be child daycare in an independent building, child daycare operated within a school, hospital or place of worship. What I did notice is when you're looking at the schedule for RR, the schedule for RR also allows care homes, but it's not written into the words. So I would recommend that we probably put care homes in there. And the, and the only other nuance is that we've already written in the code, adult daycare center operated within a main building, school, place of worship. The weird thing about that is in RR, they don't allow school or places of worship as a use anywhere, so there, I don't know if there are any in RR zone, and maybe that's why that is, but it is kind of an odd thing to be in there to say you can have the daycares within a school or place of worship, but then you don't have a school or a place of worship as a, as a permitted principal principal or special use in the zone at all. That's the new one.
So.
Into the code.
Yeah, so.
What was added, you know?
Yes, I know.
The newer zones.
Yeah, so so that care homes thing was a little eyebrow raising for me, but the key thing is in the schedule, it's got a huge acreage requirement, an area requirement.
Yes, I think that's because they're more like like Brookdale and like, yeah, Glen Eddie, yeah, type of thing, whereas the the, the daycares and the, you know, the, in the, in buildings, I think.
So so I don't think we necessarily want to, I know about adding the language about the care home outside of the schedule in the main text, but we don't want to make any changes there, right?
Well, I'd say if we're touching it, we should just make them consistent, so if we wouldn't want, if we don't want care homes in rural residential, then we just take it out of the schedule. It's just funny that it's in the schedule now and not on the other side.
Some of the changes are made by force of the pat of in-law where the like group homes have to be accommodated.
So group, group homes are exempt from our zoning. Our zoning does not touch them, we're not messing around with them.
So where we had something that seemed very similar, we started looking where else they should be allowed.
Yeah.
That's the background, whether it was done right, I don't know.
Yeah, so I mean, the main thing that is accomplished is if you go through pretty much on the underline red is where you know, childcare in an independent building is allowed. I tried to color code, you know, the other things that are allowed to give a sense of what's there, then that goes through all the residential zonings, neighborhood commercial has that added as well.
But we would give the childcare that we're adding, childcare center, the same dimensional characteristics as the adult daycare?
Well, yes, I think that it's a point, it's a point to consider, but there are places where child daycare in an independent building is already allowed and has that you know, set of bulk requirements, so we could figure that they knew what they were doing back then and just carry them forward.
We have a lot of them, though.
Right, so actually.
We've got one nearby.
CN has the child daycare center in an independent building already allowed. So that has the bulk zoning requirements. It didn't have adult daycare center already allowed. So like adult daycare center got added to that. Highway commercial actually didn't allow either of them, so I, I don't know why there would be any reason why you wouldn't, I mean, I think along State Street would be completely fine for an independent childcare building.
As a home, or I think that's more appropriate than R1 and R2.
And then also CS didn't, the shopping center commercial didn't have either, so stuck those in there and then LC doesn't get either of them, LC is really just for single filming homes or conservation, but the general industrial district, I didn't actually touch this one. This only allows daycare. I think, nope, it doesn't at all. Oh, no, yeah, it does. And so like if you have a really big, big building like GE, you can have the daycare inside, but generally speaking, you wouldn't have.
I don't think they do.
I heard they did once, but I don't think they do anymore. And then RP, I think, allows them both already, so RP didn't have to get changed at all. Neighborhood mixed use was the new, the newest zone zoning code added, doesn't have as much breaking out of the different things, but it was missing child daycare centers. And office technology was missing the adult daycare facilities. The other thing that we do have to change is there's some specific sections of code for adult daycare and child daycare, they have their own. The care homes has its own, adult daycare has its own and child daycare, and child daycare has its own little section on location, so that would have to be updated. And then there's just some examples of how the schedules don't match, but I don't mind matching them all.
So so child daycare in CN is on a one-acre area, minimum lot size?
One-acre area, what was the second thing?
Minimum lot size is one acre.
Oh, yeah, which I think is pretty normal. Like we had said, I mean, you know, houses of worship are two acres, so, yeah.
My concern is going with the standard lot requirements in R1 and R2. Having a daycare next to a home, I see as a problem. I see it with the child daycare, I don't see it with. So I see it with the child daycare. I don't see it with the adult daycare because there aren't the same range of issues.
Um, well, but the one acre, I think, one acre leaves a lot of. Yeah, that, that would be what we put as the bulk zoning requirement and that would be based to have the buffering and the, you know, the parking lot and make sure that it was separated from existing single family homes and stuff.
Then the ZBA could get grant variances.
Well, the ZBA can grant variance as always. So I think you write the code to the best of your ability. And if there are unique hardships, they go to the zoning board. And if there aren't unique hardships and they go to the zoning board, there's, you gotta have faith, the zoning board says that's not unique. No, thank you. I mean, that's just the way that, that we have to operate.
And so then Laura, what happens with it's a permissible location for childcare and then the size of it?
Um, well, it, so when we're proposing a special use permit, like I don't, so at the last meeting, we're sort of talking like Bethlehem actually just has them a site plans, but we're not, we're not going that far. Um, so the special use permit, I mean, it's a pretty intense process, right? You've got, well, you have to do, so it's site plan and special use permit. You've got public hearings here, you've got public hearings at the town board. If it's not an acre, you potentially involving the zoning board. Yeah, it's really tough. I, I think the only way that it would probably work good is if there was a parcel that was sort of closer an acre, over an acre, it could really fit and meet the requirements of the neighborhood.
But then how many children are permitted is what I'm asking.
Oh, I think that's bit to size of the, so there's no cap on number of people. It's just this, you know, you know, if you have a, you know, a ten acre parcel, you could put a really big building on there. And if you have a one acre parcel, you know, it's going to be limited by the, the size of the land and the square footage that you're able to fit there with the parking lot. Uh, our, our code doesn't really cap by people. It's land based. Yeah.
And then the other issue is that the state has pretty stringent staffing requirements. And it gets tough. Having worked on a major recruitment to staff a new daycare. The younger the children are, the more staff required.
The ratios get.
Yeah. For whatever it's worth. It's weird in R three, there is a child daycare center, but it's blank.
I know. The schedules are so bizarre when you really go into it.
I mean, they talk about employees, but, but the key thing is, is that there's a nursery school and I looked at R three because that would have been the small, right?
Yeah.
I mean, that's point two acres, nine thousand square feet for, for a home. So nursery schools are in there at also a one acre minimum lot size. Do we have any nursery schools in that?
Um.
Nursery schools count a little differently though, because they're considered educational.
Yeah. But I'm just looking at the nature.
And not all day.
Young people. Size of lot.
Schedule table for R one with all dimensional requirements playing.
A lot of like going back and forth of editing because they were allowed and then they weren't and then were. Yeah, but that may also be because it's just not being very clear. You can have them in a church. So I don't know. I definitely think that our schedules need to be cleaned up because Clark and I actually use the schedules sometimes almost more than the written word. So, um,
I know I do.
Schedules aren't precise. The schedules actually just say adult daycare. They don't say adult daycare in an independent building or adult daycare in a, you know, used building, like they're not precise.
There are summaries. They're not the end of it.
Right, I know, but I do think that there's no reason that they shouldn't mimic the words precisely. Um, Clark was looking, I think what Bethlehem, Clark, can you just explain what Bethlehem does with their schedule to make it like simpler?
They, their, their schedule was just quite simple.
Didn't they do something where they like reference the schedule?
Somewhere where I don't be very careful not to put information in two different spots so that they could become out of sync with each other. They just, um, somewhere in their text code, they basically reference this appendix. I think this is appendix A in their zoning code. So they seem to have a very minimal amount in the, the text area, or they just reference this so that you had to really keep one thing um, in revision instead of two.
Yeah, conversely, sometimes put this table directly in the their E code, like in, in the, the text part of this, that you don't have two places where you make a change, one place, forget to do it in another.
Yes.
I really think that that's what happened. That's why the schedules are out of sync.
Ricky, if you have information in two spots, you have to always make sure you're keeping them in sync.
And we always say that the written text takes precedence over the schedules when there's a conflict, but I mean, if we have to adjust them, I think either we figure out a way that we're not constantly adjusting two things with the same information, or we make sure that when we adopt it this time, that they're definitely the same.
Yep.
I think there's state guidelines on that part, the written text.
Is, oh, holds over the schedule. Yeah, I think so too. Yeah.
And I remember training many years ago that discouraged relying on schedules instead of text.
Yeah, I mean, the schedules are nice, um, because the text doesn't outline the bulk zoning requirements. So nowhere in our text is the bulk zoning requirement. So, um, so a lot of times when we're talking to people, we're not just talking use, we're talking what's the size of the land, we're talking what the setbacks are. So the schedules are much more useful when you're reviewing something with someone at the counter. Um, because we don't have, we, we don't have the setbacks and stuff written, you know, in the written text. It's all in the schedules.
Yeah, I mean practically there is the most. That's why I think with this exercise, maybe just on this topic of care homes, child daycare centers, adult daycare centers, we just need to make sure they're consistent.
Yeah, that's what I think. So I started it, you can see that and the extra sets of code. So I think we can probably have it adjusted better, including the schedules for the next meeting, but it's not quite ready to call for a daycareing yet.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Good work.
Yep.
So yeah, it's a, this is not something we do all the time. So take your time with it. You know, repetition is always helpful with this, reach out to planning department if you have specific questions.
Yeah, I know for me personally, Laura, you're putting it in this format immediately went to now we can start talking about sizes and setbacks, et cetera. And to see it commensurate with nursery, to see it commensurate with, um, you know, the size of churches, et cetera. And what's in CN. I, I, I think that a concern Leslie raised that one acre minimum lot size is, is important.
Yeah, because you're not going to want it to be the same size as a regular single family. Because it's the same issue that we were just.
Does that hold? What does that do for our little test case on, um, by salons?
Because, yeah, Clark did put in the agenda statement, we do still have that interest. You know, uh, those two lots would be combined together. I, my guess would be they're actually pretty close to an acre or over. We'd have to look.
Yeah, it might be worth, I'll just throw in.
Yeah, yeah, I know. It'll be worth it. Take a look at that. But yeah, because we do have interest in an independent daycare building, you know, in our one zone. So.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to reports.
Um, my only report, which actually I probably should have said under public hearings, is that we've been receiving um, public comments for and against, uh, you know, Harry's mobile at two through three nine Troy's Connect you road for months. Um, I was actually holding it because I was thinking that it was going to come back to the planning board, so we could just put it in the packet. But I've, you know, I've received so much and we got the foil that I figured I just send it out to you guys now so you could have it. Um, I don't expect it to come back to you guys, at least they're not scheduled to go back before the zoning board until September. So you're probably not even going to see it again until October, but I wanted to at least make sure that you had those comments and probably will get more. But that's basically like from November up until like today.
Okay.
And then, uh, yeah, I won't be here at the twenty, twenty fifth meeting. I'm taking my daughter to New Hampshire for her birthday. So, um, Clark will sit in.
L- Laura, what, what's the key interpretation item that the ZBA is doing with Harry's application?
Oh, whether or not it's a use variance or an area variance required. And I think they're putting a lot of effort into having it only be an area variance required. It's a different threshold of review.
I would agree with that. Not my call.
Rob has been, um, presenting the towns case. It's very complicated. So the ZBA is taking its time. It's reviewing all the details. It's received more information. Um, so they have time to review that and then they'll work on it again in September.
Um, any upcoming training, training?
Oh, they did send out a save the date for the October training, so I'll send that to you guys.
Oh, when in October?
Um.
Probably when my besties in town. That's where my luck's been going. You got it.
Thank you.
Laura, you might, you might give a little update on Katrina's Mexican grill sign.
That's okay. Yes. Oh, yes. All right. I have. So Katrina submitted their sign. Um, it does look like the square footage is compliant. Um, Clark and I are researching whether or not the little skull is a logo. Um, so we just want to look and see if they use it as a logo in other places before we classify it as a logo. Um, and, but if it is code compliant and that is a logo, I think it'll be okay to just issue a building permit because the, the resolution for approval said if it was, the signage was compliant. It can go. And so we just have a little more research to do on the logo, maybe compliant. Um, and then, uh, Rivers Ledge is submitting a application for their monument signs too. We did talk about that at the last meeting. Had a meeting with them, still working to get their final COs, dorm order maintenance agreements and things for them signed. Um, but they have agreed to submit the, they said it was an oversight and they apologize and they will submit the plans for those monument signs.
Those tall, that's the tall one.
Yeah, they're.
They're tealish.
They're teal. Yes.
Um, and then Laura, we just got the update for the Safe on Seven. That they're just still in the process of kind of.
Yeah, so they synthesized the public comments and they are preparing concepts now. So the public comments, there was a lot of different comments, like anything from, you know, we want to see medians, we want to see a multi-use path, we, you know, one lane, whatever they synthesized all those comments, they ran the comments past DOT to see what were non-starters. Um, I think really the only non-starter with DOT is that a road diet, it, it won't, it, there's only one section of the road where you could go down to one lane and it would cause backup on all the other lanes. So I don't think you'll see a concept for a road diet, but all the other ones, they'll try and address and then they will do concept kind of drawings that will do more public outreach and comment on.
I hope they researched the data they've got from years ago.
So Leslie.
Relevant.
I do bring up all the time that the old medians were not the greatest medians ever created to mankind. And they are well aware, those type of medians wouldn't even ever be allowed to be designed anymore. It's not, it's not a concept that they'll look at. They are looking at only, you know, I mean, most of these things are funded with federal dollars. So they're looking at, you know, federal highways, design, traffic calming, acceptable standards, DOT. Um, they're not talking about concrete medians that launch cars across into the incoming traffic. Not a concept that you'll see.
Anybody get caught on one of those Groovy cameras and get the ticket in the mail?
Um, you know.
That's what we need.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think that the actual ticketing from the cameras is a whole beast, which I'm not even sure we're allowed to do because towns authority is very different from cities and states, but, um, we are still putting cameras up that will catch beating. So don't speed on Route seven because they're going, they're working on it. Um, DOT is also working on getting us your permanent, your speedest signs. So.
I think the, uh, school bus cameras help.
The school bus cam, cameras have helped a lot. People don't realize sometimes, um, that, you know, on Route seven, when you're three lanes over or four lanes over, that you still have to stop. Yeah, you still have to stop.
I thought on a divided highway you didn't.
You do. And you actually even have to stop on Grand Boulevard. So be careful. You gotta look through. To make sure that there's no bus, because if there's a bus even on the other side of the median stop, then you better stop.
Years it was divided, you didn't have to.
You absolutely have to.
Okay.
So going back, so there's a lot less police presence from when the quote unquote volume of information happened. So a lot of people are speeding and stuff.
They, I mean.
I, I mean.
They're a lot.
They're a lot.
They are out there a lot.
They, but they.
People are speeding.
I really appreciate living right there in that area and seeing the police there. The presence is huge. Even the state troopers, I mean, they're all over that, but I think somebody needs to speak with them because they're parking across in that national grid spot. Um, next to the old Measick house. And they're doing it on a Sunday afternoon or Sunday morning. You're not going to get anything.
So I think they actually get things all the time. One of the things that we really look at for the linkage study is that, you know, enforcement, it's not sustainable, right? You can have fifteen cars out there, but if the roadway, if I'm not paying, I have to set my cruise control on Route seven. If I'm driving Route seven, I set my cruise control because if I am not paying attention, I am going too fast. So.
You have to work at staying.
You really have to, because the, the, the actual physical construction of that road, it does not traffic calm. It, a lot of that has to do with the five lanes. So you feel like there's no construction. There's nothing that's interrupting your visual, like you've, you can see a long way ahead and that's just generally speaking, I mean, it feels a little bit like driving on the Northway, only there's single family homes all along it. So one of the things the linkage study is really going to try and address is breaking up that huge expansive asphalt, like adding in vertical, I mean, it's usually trees, like adding in that vertical thing to stop, you know, that whole open area and actually get people to slow down naturally. Um, that's much more sustainable in the long run than, than the massive police forces. Is you have to actually change that physical roadway. Yeah.
The, the fact is people speed throughout town. My street's two blocks long and they speed.
But, um, you guys are welcome to bring this up, but the public safety committee hated those neighbors. We're working on it.
Good. Any other commission business? Okay, I have nothing further. A motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Gold. Second by Ms. Strang. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And meeting is adjourned at eight forty-eight PM. Thank you.